Hello, welcome to our podcast for today. This is Black Commission Sharing Space. I am Kenneth Covington and today our guest is Tracy Poulsen, the candidate for the Group Three at-large City Council seat, along with three other candidates. Tracy has volunteered to come and share with us this morning. The Black Commission does not endorse, but we do educate and inform the people about what they have a choice of. So today, we will be hearing from Tracy so that the voters will be able to make an informed decision on who will be representing them. Tracy, welcome this morning. And if you don't mind, we will get right into this. What we would like to know first is, who is Tracy Poulsen? And why should the Black Commission supporters be voting for Tracy?
Well, good morning, Kenneth. It's nice to see you. Thank you for having me. Shout out to all the members of the Black Commission, some of whom I've had the privilege of working with, protesting with, and having small one-on-one conversations. So it's really nice to be with you this Sunday morning. So I'm going to give you a brief answer to that question because otherwise we could talk a long time about sort of who I am and what I believe and a little bit about my life story. But I'll start with, you know, I'm Dr. Tracy Poulsen. I am a white woman. I was born on an army base in Fort Hood, Texas. And both of my parents are still living. They divorced when I was 13. I'm the oldest of three. So if anybody knows anything about birth order, oldest children are typically overachievers, which I've been accused of in my life. And I learned very early on as a child that sometimes the people who are supposed to love and protect and care for you are the people who can hurt you the most and cause the most damage. And so that really created in me a lifelong desire to want to understand why, why people do what they do, especially in the context of families and relationships. But also, as I got older, I began to see it in communities and different environments. And so I am the first person in my family to graduate from college. I dropped out after a year because it felt so overwhelming and unachievable because nobody else had done it. And so it almost felt like somebody said, hey, go to Mars, right? Like, that's what it felt like. And so I dropped out. And then I went back and graduated. I went back as a working mom and graduated with my bachelor's degree when I was 31. My daughter was seven and I was four and a half months pregnant with my son at the time. And then I went on to get a master's degree in social work and a PhD in clinical social work. So that's just a little bit about who I am. And I'm happy to answer, you know, more specific questions, too.
All right, excellent, excellent.
Oh, let me get to the second part of that question, which is, why would your members and listeners consider voting for me? And I think, you know, obviously, I am one of four candidates. I'm the only woman on the ballot. There is another Democrat running, a black man. And so I'm hearing a lot in the community in this space of race as to who could better represent people of color, a black man or a white woman. And that question, I think, especially today, makes a lot of sense. And all I can tell you is I've worked really hard my whole life. I am a fighter. And the conversations that I've had with people is that I will fight for every person in Jacksonville. As an at-large seat, what that means is I would represent everybody throughout Duval. And that's really important. It also is a tremendous responsibility that if I'm elected, that I will pay particular attention to folks who have been left out, promises that have been made primarily to the Black community after consolidation, but even before that. When we think about systemic racism and white supremacy, certainly in the United States, but more importantly, right here in Jacksonville, that continues. And so again, that question is important. I would really encourage your listeners to meet with me, look at my background, look at the work that I have done in this community, but even more so over my entire career in fighting for people who are marginalized and vulnerable.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we as a people, as an organization, we love everyone. However big the Black Commission, we are biased and are working toward improving the Black community's positions in America, Jacksonville specifically, Duval. But we have the work and the challenge ahead of us to improve in areas where a lot of things need to be improved. And what I heard from you is you had some varied experiences. You seem to be fairly well-versed in the realities that we're addressing in this country. With that in mind, there's one point that I would like to just kind of get your feel on. When you hear the term of Black Agenda, what connotations or what does that mean? How would you interpret that?
Well, I think about that that probably should have been the American Agenda, right, from the beginning? Except that, as you well know, Black people were enslaved in our country and have systematically and intentionally been kept from achieving any of the American dream through federal, state, and local governments. And when I say intentional, I mean by policy, policies that were enacted to harm and keep out Blacks, but even beyond people of color, right? Like, that is just a fact and true. And it continues. Policies like redlining. And even today, what we see here in Jacksonville, where different ZIP codes have healthcare inequalities, there is a lack of Black wealth that has been eroded in this country, again, due to policies. When we think about environmental justice, so we know that communities of color are more likely to struggle with pollution and that, again, systematically and intentionally were created to segregate folks of color. I like to talk about this one example just here locally, in terms of environmental justice, just as one example. On a really, really hot day at UF Shands downtown, it's 10 or more degrees hotter than it is in Ortega because of the tree canopy. And so how this impacts folks is that we know that a lot of people show up at the emergency room for heat stroke and dehydration, which impacts kidney health. So there's a lot of intersection around education, poverty, access to money in terms of folks, I've been spending a lot of time with small business owners, access to capital, you know, being able to secure loans, small amounts of money. When we think about the money, the incentives that are given to large corporations and businesses to build here in Jacksonville. We have an amazing richness of entrepreneurs here. And they just need a little of that help. They need a seat at the table. And so when I think of the Black Agenda, especially here in Jacksonville, I think about small businesses. Are we going to be able to give them access to bid on some of these city contracts? We know that there's a Good Old Boy Network here in Jacksonville. And lots of folks, including women, are kept away from that. And I want to be a voice for that. I want to fight for more access, more transparency across the board in this community. I want to talk about two other things in terms of my understanding of sort of areas related to the Black Agenda. And one of them has to do with cannabis. I know that Councilmember Garrett Dennis has tried to pass an ordinance that would decriminalize small amounts of marijuana. I'm fully in support of that. And most of the large cities in Florida have done similar things. And once again, Jacksonville is sort of behind the times in that. Another area, obviously, is our criminal justice system. I was told on a Zoom with Leadership Jacksonville this past year by Mike Williams that the Duval County Jail is the largest provider of mental health services. Well, you and I know that that cannot be a very therapeutic environment. And so when we think about mental illness in this community and the stigma around getting help and the lack of resources, I think that's another agenda item or an area that could be focused upon. I'm sure I've left some out, but those are just a few off the top of my head.
That is perfect. I bring that up because in our environment, agendas for everyone is always openly talked about. The quote "Black Agenda", for some reason, folks seems to shun away from it. I'm very pleased to hear you willing to at least acknowledge and address and understand that it is real because you will continue to hear from it, at least from the Black Commission, because we feel like it's absolutely necessary that we press in that particular area.
Well, I want to just say, like, I consider myself a lifelong learner. I don't know everything about everything. I know a lot about the things that I know about, which, you know, primarily is a mental health professional, but also a mom and a bonus mom to five grown children. And so when I think about white supremacy, it harms white people, too. It gives us great advantage, but it also harms us. And so when I think about an agenda that works for everyone, we don't have that in this country. We don't have systems. We have systems that work for, you know, the top 1%. And I also want to address, you know, this, another area of sort of my privilege as a white woman. I didn't grow up with the money that I have today. I grew up in a very working-class, middle-class family. And I didn't even understand what that concept, unearned privilege, meant because when I think about the public education that I bought, it was through that lens of white supremacy. Meaning, in a lot of ways, I was brainwashed, too, and didn't see things until much later in my, both my education. I saw things, but I didn't know the words to put on it. I didn't know how to think about it in the context of both my family, but also where I lived. And so it just feels important to say that these systems don't benefit us as a nation, certainly not us as a city here in Jacksonville.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for sharing with that. I heard you mention a couple of things related to our Sheriff's Office and our sheriff. Along those lines, I'd like to hear your views on the need to establish a citizen review board to monitor JSO, as mentioned in the Safer Together report. And if there are some other tenants in that report that you think are very important that should be followed through on.
Yeah, so I've talked about that report really from the very beginning of this campaign. When I ran, I ran for the Florida House in 2018, District 15, so that's Riverside, Abinale, Ortega, and then all the way up to the West Side, including Baldwin. And when I went before the FOP during that campaign, I had read a lot of different white papers on various aspects of issues that were important to police. And one of them was a citizen's review board. And what the papers that I had read, the criticism was the, what could be sort of like bogging down of getting folks who don't have criminal justice or law enforcement, or even an understanding of the law, to be sort of overlooking the police. That was one of the criticisms. And that made sense to me in a particular way. As a licensed mental health professional, people who don't have the kind of training that I have think that all I do is listen to people and, you know, kind of common sense help to solve their problems. I've gone to school for a long time and I have a deep level of training in terms of human development, brain development, theoretical development about human behavior. And I had to go to school for a long time and I had to take tests and I still have to have continuing education in my field. And so when I think about a group of sort of regular citizens who may not have a deeper understanding of what I do overseeing me, I get that pushback. But I want to address what was recommended because I have it right here. I've read it a couple of times, the Safer Together report. And what they talked about was the ordinance that Garrett Dennis, Councilmember Garrett Dennis advocated for, which I'm in alignment with and I would support this. And I'm reading from this report. Dennis indicated that the board would not be political, and that was a criticism made by FOP President Steve Zona, but rather made up of 15 members with 14 chosen by city council members, so one representative from each district and one JSO representative. They would serve two terms. The board would review closed investigations, review policies, and make recommendations. The idea of the CRB has arisen in many cities after numerous issues surrounding lack of trust in police officers being investigated by their own, i.e. police policing the police. And then the attorney, Attorney Phillips stated that there is a misconception that the JSO investigates the JSO. He stated that the state's attorney's office has an on-call prosecutor and investigators who take over cases from homicide detectives when a case involves a police shooting or other issues of excessive force that results in a death. It goes on to say that the CRB is not a new concept, but one that must be revisited if JSO is hoping to create transparency and develop trusting relationships with community members. It was rather apparent from the meetings that trust is an issue and should be addressed because community policing involves input from the citizens being policed. So that recommendation of a citizen's review board that would be advisory that came out of that report is one that I am in support of. I think it begins a process of developing trust and developing relationships, which are sorely lacking in this community. I also want to say that I've talked to a lot of folks, Black police officers, white police officers, female police officers, as well as folks in the community. And most of the folks that I have talked to say that this idea of a citizen's review board that has sort of any more than just an advisory capacity is a non-starter. In my mind, this is a place to start and should be revisited. I think you're aware that Councilmember Michael Boylan resigned from this committee and then Council President Sam Newby disbanded this committee, which I think is an atrocity. I think this should be revisited and that the recommendations that were put forward should be, continue to be explored and advocated. And so whether or not this committee goes forward, there are recommendations in this, in this report that I would continue to advocate for. One being the expansion of the Co-Responder Program. And this is a program that's already in place at JSO where there's a licensed mental health professional that goes along with a JSO, a police officer, on crisis mental health calls. And this would help to de-escalate those interactions and potentially prevent folks from being jailed due to really what is a mental health issue, which would make everyone more safe. And so there was a recommendation or a suggestion in this report to expand that to every zone, every shift, and that it would create a way for police to become more educated and informed about what the continuum of mental illness and mental difficulties look like. I'm really in favor of that. But I will tell you that I did not get the FOP endorsement for this race. And in fact, Steve Zona, who has blocked me on Twitter, so I can't even see anything that he tweets about me, used this as a way of saying that I'm for defunding the police. So this is where the details matter. If I'm for something like the expansion of that program, then I'm automatically in favor of defunding the police. And that binary doesn't work for me and it's just not true.
Excellent. While we're on that, because I was just thinking that your position and how you felt about that, because with the co-responders, what that looks like to me is using the resources differently that are already allocated. And along those lines, you know, we've had issues with feeling like this constantly piling on for the JSO budget. And what they do with it seems to still not solve what the problems are. And I noticed that one of your opponents, his position with that is JSO needs more money and more officers to make things better, which, again, flies in the face of reallocating some of what already is there. Without getting too involved in that part of the conversation and the defunding and so forth, which seems to be a talking point that it becomes a block and for folks to stop thinking about how we can solve things. And they just throw that point up, oh, no, we can't defund, we can't stop. But what are your thoughts on what can be done and how those budgetary dollars can be utilized in a way to help make things better?
Well, just using that example of the Co-Responder Program, this is a program that's already in place. So doesn't it make sense that if it's working, if they see the results of that? And by the way, I don't know what the results of that program are. This is where, an area where we need more information. But doesn't it make sense that if that program is working, if it's decreasing folks being put into jail because of mental health issues, that they would want to expand it?
You would think so.
Right? So that, I will just, I will just say that. I will also say that it's public that I am supporting Lakeisha Burton for sheriff. I've had conversations with her about her vision for JSO as it relates to community policing. I think that women bring a very different sensibility to solving problems. And so I'm really excited to learn more about her vision for JSO if she's elected sheriff. She would be, as you know, the first Black woman elected to that position. And I think it could be a game changer for the city.
Absolutely, absolutely. And what we can all agree on is we definitely need change in that arena. I've heard you mention a couple of other things that I want to go ahead and touch on. A while time, the clock is rolling. But your thoughts on regarding to businesses and economic development from a Black community perspective? You know, those are, again, the disparity and the shortages and the things where we need significant improvement. Do you have any thoughts, ideas on what can be done to help promote a better environment in that area?
Yes. So I am a small business owner. I own my own psychotherapy and counseling practice. And I have for years. And I love this work. I'm grateful to be able to do it and to feel like I make a real difference in people's lives. I spent a few hours yesterday with One Bridge Connect. Do you know anything about this organization?
Not familiar.
Okay, so I learned about it through one of my campaign organizers. And it's out at the Regency Mall. And it is an organization that is owned by Autumn Redding and Luke, and I want to get, make sure I get his last name right, Luke Lewis. And they are a business, not just Black business, but small business accelerator. And so I really encourage your viewers to go visit this, this space in the Regency Mall. So yesterday was their one-year anniversary and they had all of their vendors, all of their businesses that have various space inside this location. It also has a meeting space. It has a book area for Black authors who have published. And so folks can go in there. They, there's also a photography sort of area set up. And I met a photographer there that works with this group, but now I'm going to blank on their name, to take photographs. And they have a green screen so they can create any sort of background. The cool thing is, the cool thing about this is that they are business coaches and they work with small businesses, entrepreneurs. The youngest one is 14 years old. And it could be like apparel, food, beauty, clothes, a whole host of entrepreneurs and ideas. And so I spent a few hours yesterday talking to these folks, bought some Christmas presents from them, tasted their food and their tea, and it was really remarkable. And so one of the things that we know is that we lost 30% of small businesses downtown. We know that we provide major incentives and tax breaks for large developers to come into Jacksonville. I feel like we need parity around supporting minority-owned businesses. So that includes, you know, Black-owned businesses, businesses of color, women, folks that typically don't have a seat at the table. There's a lot we can do in that space. And again, I just want to encourage anybody that listens or receives this podcast to go and visit this group. Their website is one, so the number, bridgeconnect.com. And they are at Regency Mall. Autumn Redding is a powerhouse. What she has been able to do in terms of supporting, encouraging, and helping these businesses grow is phenomenal.
Okay. And again, One Bridge Connect is the name of the space in Regency?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll definitely do some follow-up to get some additional information and share some.
Let me just say, and then there's another, I want to make sure I get this because there was a lot, there were several businesses and I want to make sure that I... Okay, I'm not going to, I don't want to waste your time while I look on my phone. But there's another, there's a woman who has created lingerie for women of all sizes and men, too, from extra-small to 5X. And her, her vision and her message is about loving your body in all its sizes. And I had this wonderful, her name's Ebony, and I had this wonderful conversation with her where we talked about the way that women in particular, from the minute we, you know, are aware the messages that we get about our bodies, our looks, and how it's literally like in the water and in the air. And so what she's done is she's turned that upside down and really encourages women of all sizes to own their bodies, own their shapes, own their curves, own their stretch marks, own their fat, like, you know, everything, just to own it and claim it and really claim that kind of confidence. And it just resonated with me tremendously. So next Saturday, she's having a fashion show in the space right next door to One Bridge Connect. So I'll give a shout out to her for that, too.
Fantastic, fantastic. I've heard some excellent responses from you. There's a primary question I have, though, that just kind of bolts on the responsibility that you're looking to get by being, being elected. And from standpoint of asking you a question related to it, what do you believe the primary responsibilities of a candidate who serves as an at-large candidate in contrast or opposition or similarities to the single district candidate who sits in her seat? And I preface this by the thoughts that we, as an organization, feel that many of the folks sitting in those seats that we have been responsible for electing have not served the people well. So, you know, when you're sitting in one of those seats, we're curious to know, what do you see as responsibility for adhering to what people are electing you for?
Let me give you a little bit of a long answer to that.
Okay.
After the presidential election in 2016, like, a lot of women across this country, I thought I was going to lose my mind. And I became much more involved here in Jacksonville in politics. I was involved when, when I lived in Maryland. But to this extent, I jumped in both feet, you know, up to my eye. To this extent, I jumped in both feet, you know, up to my eyeballs. And one of the things that I was really fascinated by when I went on to the Duval Supervisor of Elections website, when I looked at every city council, district, and I looked at the maps, and then I looked at the demographics. And so I looked at the demographics of seven, eight, nine and ten. And then I looked at the demographics of the other seats in terms of, you know, black, white, Hispanic and other. And those, by the way, are the categories that they use.
Yeah.
And those numbers and what they look like. For example, in District, City Council District 14, so I just want to give you, which is where I used to live, the numbers. So for City Council 14, and that's sort of Riverside and Avondale, there are about forty-seven thousand voters. Thirty-two thousand, almost thirty-three thousand are white, seven, almost seventy-five hundred are black, twenty-eight hundred Hispanic and thirty-seven hundred other. And again, this is hot off the press as of October. In comparison, Duval countywide, there are six, about six hundred and forty-five thousand voters. Now remember, this isn't the total population, these are just voters, right? There are a lot of folks who don't, who have not registered to vote. And so in Duval, three hundred and sixty-five thousand approximately are white and a hundred and eighty-two thousand are black. Almost thirty-eight thousand are Hispanic and then almost sixty thousand are other. And so these numbers represent both Democrats, Republicans and MPA. So if I'm elected, I'm responsible for all of Duval. I have to, to run for this seat, I have to live in a particular area. But that means I'm responsible for and to and represent all of those people, whether they voted for me or not.
Absolutely.
And, and I think I also have a responsibility to pay attention to the disparities and the inequities in this city and to fight for folks who are also electing me, right? Like when we think about parity and we think about equity and we think about equality, we have to look at that. I have to look at that through anything that comes before the city council. And that is my pledge, that I will, and I think I, I've said this in other spaces. I think as a white woman in this city and this day and time, I have to look at things through a race lens. And I don't mean that in a way to exacerbate disparities. I'm just, it's just real, it's just true, right? That we know that there are inequities in this community. And so that is part of what I will do if I'm elected, is I will fight hard for the most vulnerable among us, the folks who have not had someone fighting for them.
Excellent. Glad to hear that because we, you know, we also have been observing and noticing that things have shifted when it comes to people getting elected, that I can remember the times when we elected someone and expectation was that once you're elected, you serve everybody. But now it's been openly changed that people serve the ones who they felt like supported them or contributed to them, to the disdain or just totally ignoring others, which is not the way it is meant to work. So it's encouraging to hear you say you're willing to serve all the people if elected. So that's, that's a benefit in itself. What I'd like to kind of give you, I guess this would be a kind of a blanket opportunity to talk about something, and that would be looking at the city in, in general, and as you've said, you were responsible for serving everyone. With that in mind, what types of changes or things can you see that would be required here in Jacksonville that will allow all communities in Jacksonville to thrive? And that's with the understanding that, you know, and if you hadn't been here, I'm sure you know by now, it's still common knowledge that, you know, there are two different Jacksonvilles, you know, and all don't receive the same services or the same attention. So, you know, in people who we are electing now, because our opinion is that people we've elected in the past have allowed things to be stagnant and perpetuated in a way that they are, but we're looking for new people to be seated that will look at things and serve us in a different way. So what is it that you could see you being able to influence that would help all communities to be able to thrive here in Duval?
You know, I think, I think my background as a clinical social worker is really relevant to this work because part of my education and training involves looking at systems. It involves, it involves looking at both the individual, but the individual in the context of their family, their community and the various systems that impact their lives. And so I bring that approach to it. When I think about particular issues, one that really feels relevant and pressing is, is climate change. We are a city surrounded by water and we know that there's flooding. We know that there, the different folks in different zip codes don't have access to clean drinking water. We know that because of septic tanks, we have pollution into the St. John's River. We know that, you know, big money has caused or advocated for the dredging of the St. John's River, which has increased the potential for flooding, right? We know that we have difficulty with drainage. So this is sort of an infrastructure. So when I think about something that can be done that will benefit this entire city, it is infrastructure, drainage, septic tanks, sidewalks, streetlights. Those are fundamental, basic sort of things that I think will help with mitigate planting trees, mitigate some of the dangers related to flooding and climate change, as well as help with businesses and neighborhood home values, right? Like people will feel better and their values will increase if they have sidewalks and clean drinking water and streetlights. And that will also make, I think, communities safer. I'm not saying in a blanket way, but it's a huge opportunity. And I think both with the infrastructure money that's coming from the Biden administration as well as the money from the gas tax and the half-cent sales tax, which we know that's a regressive tax. But we know that there was huge disparities in schools and that some kids who were going to schools, literally in buildings that were practically falling down around them. And so we can do something about that. And I think when people are in environments that are clean and safe and modern, it helps them to feel like somebody cares about me and there's a value here. And so I think when I, when I just think about like infrastructure in particular, I feel like that's something that we can really focus on that will benefit everyone. The other thing that I would think about is, you know, the Schools to Prison Pipeline and our opportunity to look at criminal justice reform. And that goes back to something that I had said earlier about decriminalizing marijuana and really addressing the mental health needs of this entire city. Because after the pandemic, I, I and many of my colleagues, both here in Jacksonville, but I have a network nationwide, could not believe the numbers of calls, the number of suicide attempts completions that we were seeing during the height of the pandemic. And folks are still suffering in that way. I will just say one last thing about criminal justice reform. When we think about when somebody has, comes out of jail or prison and the fees that they're on probation, the fees and fines that they have to come up with and the way that that impacts recidivism, right? Like it's just this vicious cycle and I feel like there's something we can do in that space as well to sort of lift people out of that system.
Fantastic, fantastic. Well, you know, this has been an excellent conversation and we as the Black Commission, you know, we, we advocate and the things that we are pressed on are economics within our communities, mental and, and medical health, the political arena, which we are having this discussion, and education. And in our conversation, you've actually touched on those areas. One of the things that we also do is to hold individuals who we are elected accountable. So if elected, feel free that you will be here for Black Commission from a standpoint of accountability and following through on things that you, you say you're going to do on behalf of the people. With that in mind, and I guess this is, we're kind of to the point where if it was a real forum, where they would then give everybody opportunity for that closing remarks. So I think that's where we are. I've heard some great things from you. You've responded to the questions that we have for you. So at this point, I would ask you, in your opinion, what makes Tracy Poulsen the best candidate in this race? And you can compare to others or just give us the positives about yourself? And this would be your closing elevator speech.
Okay, thank you, Kenneth. I think first and foremost, I would say I can't be bought. I am not beholden to anyone other than my own conscience and sense of who I am. I want to be able to look at myself in the mirror and look at my children and they will know that I am trustworthy and I have integrity. I, I show up throughout this entire campaign, but even before this campaign, I show up in a lot of different spaces where I can, not to grab the microphone, not to be in the limelight, but to learn, to connect with folks, to build relationships. I will continue to do that. I will tell you, I've been in a lot of spaces where I've been told that the other candidates haven't responded. They don't show up. They don't show up to be on a panel. We, we had Black Expo here a few weeks ago and they did a candidate forum. And out of the four candidates running for this seat, there were only two. Myself was one of them. And so I just, you know, I show up. I, my training, my life experience, I'm not afraid to have hard conversations. I will sit down and listen and talk with anyone. And so I just think if people want to know why they should vote for me is that I can't be bought, I don't have a nonprofit that I will have a conflict of interest when, you know, money gets handed out by, you know, City, City Hall. Like you don't have to worry about that conflict of interest. I will show up and I will listen and I will be willing to have the hard conversations.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, let me say one other thing.
Go ahead, this is your turn.
Voter suppression, voter suppression is real. I have the honor of listening, of seeing Stacey Abrams at the Florida Theater this past week. Voter suppression is real. This is a special election and I wouldn't wish this on my worst enemy. Very few people know, and we've been working hard to get the word out about this election, but a lot of people do not know. A lot of people do not know that Tommy has already passed away on September 11th. And so early voting starts on November 27th. Not every voting site that folks typically vote at is open, so people need to go onto the Supervisor of Elections website. They can also go on my website, which is PoulsenForJacksonville.com. We've listed where the early voting sites are. The hours are reduced, so the hours for early voting are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And if you are a working person, it's going to be really difficult for you to vote during those hours. So please, please let folks know that voter suppression is real. Election Day is December 7th. Those voting hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is an election where everybody in Duval can vote. It doesn't matter what party you, you're in. In order to win outright, somebody has to get fifty percent of the vote plus one. Otherwise, the top two vote-getters will go on to a runoff, which is February 22nd, 2022.
Very good. That's what I call informing the voters so that we will be educated about the realities of the process. Again, we want to thank you for making yourself available to come talk with us. And ladies and gentlemen, this is Tracy Poulsen, who joined us here, sharing space with the Black Commission. Again, if that's it, we want to thank you for being with us and I hope you have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too.
All right.
Take care.
Bye-bye.